That's good. Oh, that's nice. I'll plug you for it.
We're gonna have one here though. You're gonna be proud of it.
I can't ride 20 minutes. I've ridden in a while.
Kick it off.
Huh? Yeah.
Yeah, that was it.
I could sneak up in the woods and show up when we finished. Go on.
All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council or order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council present. I apologize for being 10 minutes late. We had a work session before the meeting, so at this time if you will stand our Community Resource Officer, Mr. Everett Kelly, will lead us in our pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Everett, why don't you, before you sit down, come and tell people what's fixing to happen here in a while with their National Night Out while you're there.
As you guys know, it's that time of year again, it's the National Night Out. I am Officer Everett Kelly. I'm a Community Resource Officer for the Police Department. I handle all the community events and programs. The National Night Out, it's a two-part celebration. We have October the 4th, that's our kickoff. Now, we've always been doing the kickoff for probably about three, uh, four years. Uh, this is my third year doing it, and it's getting bigger and bigger each year. It's going to be at the substation right off of Texas Parkway, 1700 block of Texas Parkway. Right next door to the 700, so you guys should miss it. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, so I'm looking for volunteers. Um, so if you guys want to volunteer or be a part of it, definitely give me a call. I'm gonna leave my business cards up here. The second part is going to be October the 7th, which is the official night out, which is that Tuesday. That's when you guys have your block parties and all your neighbors, everybody get together. So I got Paco, the mayor and I, we brought together all the timepiece this year. We got a Tahoe, so we'll have air conditioning, so. So October the 7th, and that's from 5:00 to 8:00, and that's gonna be a target off of 6,000 block of, uh, I don't know, six. So with that being said, we're only there from 5:00 to 6:00, one hour. After that, we break off and we start visiting all the block parties. Last year, we had about 65, 68 block parties. This year, we may have more. So far, we have 35 that's already registered, and that's gonna bring me to my next slide here. If you guys have a block party and you need to register, please contact me. Uh, you can call me or you can send me an email. I'm gonna leave my cards up here with all that information on it. And the City Council, everybody have their National Night Out shirts and their hats and they're ready to rock and roll. Now, I'm bringing you guys back a little bit. On October the 4th, we're gonna have door prizes, free food. Uh, we're also going to have a dunking booth, dunker police officer, a dunker cop. So I'm trying to see who I want to put in that booth.
Dunker man.
I think my chief in there, he's sounding nice. So. Part of this, you know, I don't know if I have any suggestions. Yes, we can make suggestions, yeah. So, um, and that's about it. Oh, I wanna clip too fast here. All right.
Thought we were going Dunkin', maybe.
Something else I wanna kind of throw out there, we're starting our second annual basketball tournament, and that's gonna be November 8th and 9th. Second annual basketball tournament, November 8th and 9th. You'll start seeing a lot of information and, um, lines out on that. And if you know a special team, please, 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 give me a call. Uh, on the show, I ask you to participate. We encourage you guys to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The food is always great at all the, that's, she didn't tell you that. I know we're all good food.
So did the, so did the chief volunteer?
Uh, I'm gonna put it in here. We'll find somebody else.
Yeah, he's got no choice.
Get the new assistant chief, too.
Will you all be driving us this year?
Yes, if you want to.
It was, it, we got the mobile bases when y'all were driving. I didn't have to worry about getting a ticket.
All right. This proclamation says that whereas Alzheimer's disease is an irreversible and progressive brain disease, it slowly erodes precious memories, thinking skills, and the ability to perform simple tasks. And whereas this month, we stand with everyone confronting this painful reality of an Alzheimer's diagnosis, lend our support to those families who care for them and renew our commitment to delaying, preventing, and ultimately curing this disease. And whereas today, more than 5 million Americans are struggling with the challenges of Alzheimer's disease, and more than twice that number are caring for those same people. Alzheimer's is not a simp, is not simply a memory loss and is not normal aging. Alzheimer's is fatal, progressive, and there is no known cure. And whereas working together with scientists, patient advocates, and those living with this disease, we can give a sense of hope to millions of families, patients, and those caregivers. This month, we honor their compassion, remember those who have lost and press forward the next scientific breakthrough. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as World's Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the City of Missouri City, Texas, Fort Bend County. And I've got Helen Curd and Marissa Raymond and Molly Hayman here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Alzheimer's Walk, which I didn't mention, but you all can talk about the walk. Yeah.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Marissa Romo, and I work with the Alzheimer's Association, um, the Fort Bend County Outreach. We have our Walked In Alzheimer's coming up on October the 18th, the Saturday morning. Um, we'd love to have everyone come out. It's a family-friendly event, it's dog-friendly, um, it's a 5K, 3.1 mile, and it's a great way to honor someone or remember someone who's passed away from the disease. Our goal, our mission, is to end Alzheimer's disease, and so we'd love to have you be a part of it, so thank you.
Very good.
And the walk, gee, it'd be nice if it was in Missouri City, but it is being held in Sugar Land, out at Constellation Field. But I'm sure many of you know where that is. Um, it is the biggest Alzheimer's fundraiser that is done in Fort Bend County, um, and it's been doing it for, I don't know, 10, 12 years or whatever. So we're hoping that, uh, maybe you can put together some friends and come on out that day, and yes, it is a 5K, but there's also a 1K if you, uh, wanna take the shortcut, and often some anyone would. Um, but it is a fundraiser, and we hope that you'll put together a team and come out and support us, and if you can't come out, make a donation. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you. That's probably something that I can recover after walking 5K.
It's an oxygen mask, probably.
All right, chief.
Well, it's actually a special time for us, yet it's also a kind of a sad time for us. And the police department, David Avra, longtime patrol officer, and David, why don't you come on up here with me? Uh, David served 21 years for the citizens of Missouri City as a police officer, and I, his entire bio was much larger than this, but I kind of cut it down, but I'm gonna give you the highlights. David's been an outstanding officer, and everybody that's standing in the back of the room can testify to that and stand here to support you. You can see you're gonna be greatly missed, but I'll tell you a little bit about David. He graduated from Abilene Christian University in 1992 with a bachelor's degree in business administration. He actually began in 1993 as a police officer for the city of Missouri City, but he started out as a reserve officer. So about a month after he graduated from college, he entered the police academy and he applied at one place, 'cause he knew he wanted to come here. And the reason that he wanted to come here is 'cause his family has lived here since 1978, I believe, so, uh, he was just a wee lad. In 2005, he started as, he promoted and became a detective. In 2011, he returned to the patrol division, using his excellent investigative skills to serve the patrol division. During his tenure here, he has served as a SWAT team member, a field training officer, a firearms instructor, and he's also the award recipient of the Meritorious Service Award for his actions while intervening and while a person was attempting to kill another. I was actually present when that happened, and, uh, a lot of you didn't hear about it 'cause it was within a few weeks after the terrorist attack on the World Trade Centers in New York City, and obviously, the news was covering that, not so much our local news. But if it wasn't for David's quick and swift, courageous actions, because the man had a bladed instrument, uh, this lady wouldn't be still with us, and she is living still today. Uh, he's accepted a job in the private sector, yet I'm confident that he will remain active with his wife, Charity, sons Connor, Dalton, Brock, and Reese. So if I could get all of you all to come up, please? Oops, Connor had to work. Man, nut doesn't fall far from the tree. Put your brother to work, huh? In addition to his public service to the citizens of Missouri City, he's also very dedicated in his church where he serves as a deacon. So, uh, I think the mayor's got a little something to say along with the presentation, so I'm gonna step away.
Well, and, uh, David, you're missing the Quail Valley Fund meeting tonight that you should be there.
That's right.
You brought that to your attention, but, uh, you know, let me just say that, uh, having known David for many, many years and has, having seen firsthand what his service is, I just wanna know who's gonna park in front of my house now? I can look at it. I told my wife one day this week, I said, "David likes to stop in front of my house 'cause he can see this four-way stop," for one thing, but I have some shade, too, and I said, "You know, the neighbors probably wonder why the police are at my house all the time." Especially with the domestic violence on such, uh, stuff in the news today, but truly it's not. She said, "You know, they know who you are. They know that, uh, that those guys are resting in a place, uh, you know, that's safe." But anyway, David, on behalf of the citizens of Missouri City, uh, you know, what, well, we can say tonight it's not enough really for what the citizens, uh, have learned to know about you and your family, and you're right, David's one of those police officers that's grown up in this community firsthand, and that makes a lot of difference. Uh, they know the community because they've lived here all their lives. They know the streets, they don't have to relearn them. But the best thing about it is that the people who live here know them and say, "Oh, I knew you when you were that size." "Do you remember when you were that size?" Uh, but anyway, on behalf of the city, the most important thing that we can do for you is this bill of sale, uh, for a whole dollar, uh, for your Glock Model 22 that you're wearing on your, on your hip there. These guys, you know, the police officers live and die by these, and so it's routine for us that when police officers retire from the city, those things have a personal significance to them, and we sell them. We can't give it to them, so we sell it to them for a dollar, and it's, uh, our pleasure to do that on behalf of the citizens of Missouri City.
I was hoping I wasn't gonna have to talk, so.
Oh, yeah, you are.
Oh, okay. Well, I just, uh, wanted to thank, uh, the guys, girls that I work with, uh, more than anything, 'cause it has been, uh, a joy working with you guys. It's been an honor and a privilege, uh, serving with you. And, uh, it's, uh, very difficult walking away from a fraternity like that, and luckily, I'm not gonna have to walk too far. Chief Bearson's allowing me to become, or stay on as a reserve officer, so hopefully, uh, a few hours a month at least, I'll be able to, uh.
Off the tour.
Oh, yeah. Still roll around a little bit and, uh, help, help the city out, help the guys out a little bit, so I just wanted to say congratulations to you, chief, 'cause waiting for, uh, for this day, for, for you to be chief, has been, uh, a long time coming for a lot of us, been rooting for you, uh, since the days we were in patrol together, and, uh, watching him climb the ranks and ultimately sit in the big chair is, uh, is a big joy to, uh, pretty much all of us here. So, uh, well, it's, uh, from the heart, so, but I wanna thank you guys for, uh, for watching my back for all these years, and, uh, and, uh, just wish y'all the best. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, David's having a retirement party with the city on October 3rd at 4:00 PM, and as is traditional, the police department got him a plaque. There will be another present, probably with the party or whatever, that he decides on at that time. But this plaque is an appreciation award, and it says, "An appreciation of your 21-plus years of service and commitment to the citizens of Missouri City, February 1st, 1993 through October 4th, 2014."
And on behalf of the Police Officers Association, we're gonna present him with his retired badge, and then at the formal retirement, we'll be giving his, uh, shadow box if and when he gives us all the service pins, awards, and everything. Congratulations.
As much as we hate to, uh, see David leave, we're, uh, glad that he's still gonna be around as a reserve, so I will put him to work.
You didn't tell your wife that, did you? No, I'm just gonna, oh.
That's a good point. If I could have Captain Paul Polton, Lieutenant Russell Terry, and Sergeant Michael Hebert, please come up.
Do we have a barber shop over there? Hair is not a requirement, obviously.
Yeah, but it doesn't turn gray, it turns loose, so. Um, I'm gonna start with Captain Paul Polton. I've known him a long time, and, uh, we've worked the street a long time, but I'm gonna read his bio, because if I didn't read it, I'd end up messing it up, and I'd probably, uh, start messing with him, 'cause we've been, like I said, been friends a long time, and I've known his family a long time. But, uh, Captain Paul Polton is a 23-year veteran of the Missouri City Police Department and a longtime resident of Missouri City. He is married to his lovely wife, Beverly.
I added that for you.
And raised his three children here in Missouri City. Uh, Captain Polton has held many positions in the police department, including patrolman, corporal, detective, sergeant, and lieutenant, but I notice he left out he was also a public safety officer during a cross-trained fire department.
Oh, yeah.
Left that out.
Yeah.
Captain Polton has also been part of numerous teams within the department, including the firearms instruction unit, SWAT team, dive team, field, he served as a field training officer, and he's currently still on the ATV team. Uh, he received the 100 Club Officer of the Year in 1993, and he's also had many other letters of recommendation and other, uh, service awards during his tenure with the police department. Captain Polton holds a Master Peace Officer's license from the Texas Commission for Law Enforcement, and also is a graduate of the Bill Blackwood Leadership Command College at Sam Houston State University, and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, and I'd like to introduce Captain Paul Polton. I'm gonna get them all done and then give them an opportunity to say something. The lieutenant to Captain Polton's right is Lieutenant Russell Terry, although when he sent this to me, he signed it sergeant, he said, "Out of habit." Uh, he is not a sergeant any longer, but Sergeant Terry began his law enforcement career here in 2002 after being honorably discharged from the United States military, and I'm not gonna say the United States Navy. He worked in the patrol division for four years until he was promoted to detective in 2006. He worked in the criminal investigation division for five years where he specialized in robbery investigations until he promoted to sergeant in 2011. Now, the one thing he doesn't have on here, and I'm gonna add level a little bit, he was instrumental in apprehending bank robbery suspects who robbed the Frost Bank several years ago, shortly after he became a detective, due to his, uh, tenacity and just recognizing how to look for a crook, so, uh, he didn't, he left that out. Uh, after being promoted to sergeant, he was assigned to the evening shift in patrol, where he supervised the patrol squad. He also serves as the department's public information officer and has also served very well as a recruiter for the police department, going out to several, uh, job fairs and police academies in search of quality talent to serve the citizens of Missouri City. After working two years in the patrol division, he accepted a lateral transfer where he returned to the criminal investigation division as a sergeant, where he supervised detectives and the crime scene investigators. He promoted to lieutenant as of a few weeks ago, and he will do outstanding, I'm sure, in that also, but during his time with the police department, he has been recognized as Detective of the Year. He's also a recipient, recipient of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives Honorary, or he was honored by those folks, and he was also honored by the folks at National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund in Washington, DC in 2009, as a result of that robbery investigation that he solved, or robbery case that he solved. Uh, Russell states, and he's always said this, that he's never would have been successful if it hadn't been for the men and women that work alongside, beside him every day. So we look forward to seeing Russell and, as he takes on these new challenges, so allow me to introduce you, Lieutenant Russell Terry. To Lieutenant Russell Terry's right is Sergeant Mike Hebert. Mike began his public safety, uh, career in 1993, serving as a dispatcher for the village fire department near Houston, but he began working for the Missouri City Police Department in 1995, serving as a telecommunications officer for both the police and the fire department. In 1997, he was hired by the city of Missouri City as a full-time police officer, and, but he was also a cross-trained public safety officer, just like, uh, lieutenant, or, uh, I'm sorry, Captain Polton, see, I did it out of habit. Mike returned to the, uh, fire department when the public safety program went away around 1996 or 97, but he came back to the police department in 2002, where he served as a patrol officer, a traffic officer, which also means a commercial vehicle enforcement officer, which Missouri City's one of the few agencies in this entire area that has that. And most recently, he was a detective. He is a certified master peace officer by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. He's also a recognized master peace officer by the Missouri City Police Department. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree and a Master of Science degree in criminal justice from the University of Houston Downtown. Please welcome and recognize Sergeant Mike Hebert.
I just wanted to thank, uh, everybody that's here tonight. I wanna thank Chief Bearson, the community as a whole, for just allowing me this opportunity to continue to serve you in this capacity. Uh, I hope that I still have a few more good years left in me. Uh, one other person I'd like to thank tonight is my beautiful wife. I've been doing this a long time, and she has suffered through the many nights of phone calls, pages, and, and has never really ever complained one, well, maybe once. Uh, she, she has allowed me to do this, and, uh, I, I hope to keep doing it for a few more years. Thank you.
I really don't use the mic that often, because I think my voice carries. I am grateful for the opportunity that I have today. It's been a long time coming. When I first became a police officer, the thing I really wanted to do, I wanted to be a lieutenant for some unknown reason. I would have never thought in 2001 that I would be here today, and my mom's not here, she's a little bit under the weather, but thank you all for always supporting me in what I do as a police officer. So, thank you.
Not to repeat, but I really enjoyed my law enforcement career here in Missouri City. Uh, I can't think of a better place to work. I've been here 20 years, looking for maybe 10, 15 more. The best to work, they really take care of us. I look forward, looking forward to a new chapter of being sergeant here. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Amen. I tell my wife, she always asks me, "Have you seen Russell?"
It's a good thing your mama's not here.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I have something to tell her.
They didn't talk about how much they enjoyed the PSO program. Yeah, sit down, Robert. For those that don't know that, back in those days when the city was much smaller than it was today, we had what was called a PSO program. The firefighters were cross-trained as police officers, and police officers were cross-trained as firefighters, some in both, and they carried their gear in their car, and I guess we were probably the first city, or not, and, you know, maybe the first two cities in the state of Texas, were we not, that built and started that program?
You know, we were, uh, you in the Houston area, there's certain, uh, there was a couple of ballots there.
Yeah, but we were very fortunate that, uh, you know, we had that program at the time, and I know that it finally reached a point where we grew to the point where we could support both the fire department and a police department, and those guys got to choose which route they wanted to take, and as you can see, some chose fire and then came back to be, uh, police officers, so, but it was a great program, and it's still used in many cities throughout, uh, the United States that are smaller than us, so. All right, who has the wastewater? Yeah, Robert does. Okay, come on.
I'll take wastewater, sir, but I'll take water.
Our water, yeah, yeah, our water.
Well, uh, mayor and council, um, it's exciting, as always. I love to come talk about our service water plan. So we gained another award this past, uh, August, and it came from South Central Membrane Association, which is a nonprofit organization that's formed in 97 as a regional affiliate to the American Membrane Association Technology Association, and that's our, the subchapter covers Texas, Louisiana, New Mexico, Oklahoma, and Arkansas. So it's a big subchapter, and, uh, their goal is to improve water quality, as it says, through the use of membrane technology. So I'd like to have Mark come up. Mark is our, uh, our chief plant operator. He works for Quail Valley Utility District, and, uh, he's the one that makes the system run and run smooth, and so we're real excited about that. But the, uh, the neat thing about this plant of the year is that they only give out two a year, and that's one that produces 5 million gallons a day and under, and greater than 5 million gallons a day. So we fit in the small category. And they have a criteria, and that criteria, besides the size of your plant, also states is that you have an exemplary safety record, you also have a history of demonstrating that you have a preferability and preferring no permit violations, and so we've had no permit violations, and so that is a, it was a great credit to that award. And then, um, keeping it neat and clean. And, uh, all that was submitted in, and so it was exciting, and that, uh, out of that sub-region consisting of those states, as I mentioned, from Texas, Louisiana, New Mexico, Oklahoma, and Arkansas, that we were selected as the plant of the year. And so that was presented to Mark. Mark went on our behalf to the association, to that conference, and, uh, accepted, but I wanted him to be here tonight, 'cause he's the one that makes this plant run, and him and his team do an excellent job of keeping that plant. and his team do an excellent job of keeping that plant, and the investment that the community and you have made to keep that thing top-notch. So, again, thank you, and this is a time for us to do that. So, again, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll have this on display at our plant. Yes, we'll get a picture over here. But, uh, we'll have it on display at our plant, so please, we always look forward to having tours, so please give us a call.
Item for public comments, this is an opportunity for anyone to address counsel on any issue that's not an agenda item. I did not have anyone sign up, okay? Item for staff reports, this is a report on our Community Development Block Grant Program
Robert might not move it, and I may not control it, but I'm going to try to move it so y'all can hear me. Want to report to you on the accomplishments of Community Development Block Grant Funds in Program Year 2013, which is fiscal year 2014 for the city, just ended at the end I broke it already. There we go. Program Year 2013, the city received $365,549 in CDBG funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Think there's a rider, anytime you talk about getting the money, you have to name who gave you the money, so I've accomplished that. Our focus in that year, it's a two-pronged focus generally in CDBG. One is low and moderate income persons are benefited. Secondly, if we're doing a project within an area or an area-wide benefit, it should serve a neighborhood that is generally populated by low to moderate income people. Last year, our, we have an exception. Normally, under CDBG, if the neighborhood is to be considered low to moderate income, the income, average income, or 50% of the people must not have an income average over 80% of the average income for the greater Houston area. It's a long, complex thing, but we had an exception. 33.5% of the population of the neighborhood needed to be low to moderate income for it to apply. And if you can see the map, you can see generally it was the Fodren Park area, not including Fon Meadow, most of the Fodren Park area, an area north of Fifth Street and south of Highway 90, between Highway 90 and, I can't read it, but I want to say that's Independence. Correct me if I'm wrong. Quell Green and Quell Green South, uh, an area at the corner of Court Road and Staffordshire with very little, and we focus on residential, so very little of that area qualified. And finally, the area north of Fifth Street along, uh, 1092, between 1092 and, uh, Independence, or Lexington. Whichever, well, it's Lexington across, uh, across 1092. We never do it the easy way. What did we do? One of our more popular programs is the Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program. We operated that through Fifth Ward Community Redevelopment Corporation for the second year. We budgeted $100,000 to provide repairs to owner-occupied housing, take our code enforcement, our code violations in the houses, make them more accessible, um, energy efficiency repairs to make it so that people can continue to live in the house. It's not restricted to a part of town, it's restricted to low to moderate income persons. 13 homes were repaired last year. We have a map, and you can't see where the homes are, at least not very well because they're scattered around town. Several in the Hunter's Glen area, one in, uh, Quell Green, uh, two in the Quell Green West area, two along Independence over toward the, interestingly enough, over toward the Brightwater area. But again, it's not an area benefit, it's a test of the person's income. And, um, let's see, Quell Valley area, one in, I think, over in Quell Valley East, and finally, one down on Watts Plantation Road. Total of 13 houses spread all across town. Educational scholarships, we budgeted $7,000. Unfortunately, we were only able to get three qualified applications in, and we awarded, we divided the $7,000 up among those three students. They are all pursuing their education, all making good grades, all progressing through college. It will benefit our community to have better-educated people coming back, living in our community, and providing for their families. Adult literacy, $11,000 was granted to the Literacy Council. Thirty-six adults received training in English and in preparation for their GED. Doesn't sound like much, but every year, Literacy Council does a survey of the people they serve, and last year, 10% more, and it was like 80% the year before, 10% more said, "I got better pay, I got a better job," and almost all of them said, "I am more comfortable talking to my children's teachers." So, the benefit on this just keeps expanding as it happens.
Here, this, you know, I mean to say, and I'm very involved with the Literacy Council, but people don't realize, and, and they look at Fort Bend County, and they look how successful it is, there are over 49,000 people in Fort Bend County alone who cannot speak nor spell their own name. Uh, so it's not just a small thing that we, uh, take on here, and 36 adults out of 49,000 isn't a, a scratch in a, in the bucket, but that's 36 more that weren't in that 49,000 before we helped them out, and it's a, and it's a tragic thing, really.
And all of those that I've talked about, and all of those that I will talk about, are residents of Missouri City. They're not in any other part of Fort Bend County or Harris County, they are all Missouri City residents. A relatively new program for us, $11,000 was granted to Fort Bend Family Health or Access Health. Thirty-five children made 58 visits to the doctor at one of the three clinics in our area. That keeps them from getting down to the point where now they go to the emergency room, and they have the wait time at the emergency room. They go there, they can get preventative care, they can get back into school, the parents are not pulled away from work. The benefits from these go far beyond the direct benefits that we give numbers on. Meals on Wheels with $10,000 that we gave them, and they match it and add much more to it through their own fundraising activities. Twenty adults in Missouri City were delivered over 3,000 meals. That guarantees them hot meals every day of the week, and I know some of you have participated and helped distribute those meals. And don't do the math on that because sometimes they're away from the house. They may be in the hospital because these are elderly, generally, and, and they generally live alone, and one of the qualifications is they can't get out and get food on their own, they can't get out and take care of themselves. So, sometimes the driver is their contact to the outside world, the drivers are trained to note when there are other problems arising. Abused children, as much as we don't want this to be a fact, it's a fact that cuts across all of society. $12,500 was granted to child advocates. 138 children that were suspected to be victims of physical abuse or neglect received over 1,000 hours of counseling. This helps them get their lives back together, helps them deal with the difficulties they've faced, and be able to advance and mature and be successful members of our society. I talked about low to moderate income, and the chart's not easy to read because there's just too many numbers. Of the 138 recipients of assistance from child advocates, 63 of them were of the lowest income, less than 30% of median income in the greater Houston area. That's 45.6%. 21 were 31 to 50%, that's 15% of the 138. 32 were 51 to 80%, and 22 were above 80%. Again, these are limited, what HUD refers to as limited clientele. They have unique characteristics, and we don't just judge their income. Children that have been abused get help regardless of what the family income is because they're children. Literacy Council, again, these are people with a difficulty, again, fit as limited clientele, but 14 of 36 are almost 39% are of the very lowest income group. 30%, almost 31%, or 31 to, uh, 50%. 27.8% are 51 to 80%, and finally, one was above 80%. Access Health, the 35 children that, um, received assistance, all were low to moderate income. 63% were of the very lowest category, the middle category was 23%, and almost 15% in the 51 to 80% category. Meals on Wheels, again, they're a limited clientele, the elderly that need assistance. One is over 80%. Twelve of them are 60% of them are in the lowest category, and 35% are in the next category. Two of the three recipients, their family has income 30 to 50% or below 50% of median income, and one of them, their family had income below 80% of median income. Housing rehabilitation, all were low to moderate income. Divided, five of 13 were in the lowest income group, the middle income group, there were three, and the higher income group that we could help, there were five. So, overall, 90, over 90% of the assistance went to people that were low to moderate If, if my memory serves me correctly, HUD only requires us to spend, I think, 70 or 75% in low to moderate. We're very successful in focusing this on low to moderate income. A project we didn't get to last year but is under construction right now, we set aside a little over $100,000 for sidewalks. Project selected was Bolton Drive, it's in a low to moderate income area, and bids have been awarded, the work is proceeding, they're underway. Have a lot of work yet to do, and they were a Section III contractor. Aerial depiction of Bolton Drive. Code enforcement, 50,000 was budgeted. I have tracked 2,000 code enforcement hours spent in the target areas. Park improvements. Recently replaced the fencing in the backboard, um, at McLean Park on the tennis courts, and we have bid out the improvements for the new playground at Buffalo Run Park. Council awarded it at the last meeting, and it will be installed in the near future. Locations of McLean Park, next to the fire station, and at Buffalo Run, picture of Buffalo Run Park, I believe the, uh, the playground equipment's going to be put somewhere in the area of the bend in the road.
Down by the pavilions.
In that area. Administration, just to cover the space, we budgeted $60,000. Now, wasn't the maximum that could have been budgeted, but that's what was budgeted, some of the administrative money was put with other projects. MKP Consulting assisted the city in the operation of the program, and we believe we've done a successful job in operating, we've had program improvements, that is, we changed how we're doing things within the program. We've completely revised our rehabilitation, uh, housing rehabilitation application, policies and procedures for housing rehab have been revised, the scholarship application, and the policy that had been adopted were coordinated, so that we're asking for the right things, we're getting the right answers, we're making sure they work together right. Subrecipient application, uh, policy was revised, and we modified the review forms to make sure we cover everything HUD wants to see when they come to look at us every three years. Our Citizens Participation Plan, uh, has been revised, y'all have adopted that. We have adopted a labor standards policy and procedures and checklist and forms so we can go out and interview the people and make sure they're complying with Davis Bacon, and we have a Section III program, uh, ready to put into effect. What do we have for the future? Now, let's start with 2014, which is underway. Our funding was reduced to $330,211. All the public services were continued at a reduced rate, except for scholarships went up to $10,000. Shade structures were proposed for Hunter's Glen Park, and one of the things that happened July 1st, HUD got the new numbers on our neighborhoods. One of the significant things is we went from a 33.5% exception to a 40, basically 42% exception. Now, we have to show that our neighborhoods in the areas being benefi, benefited are 42% low to moderate income. HUD looked at what we had submitted with the Annual Action Plan, working under 33.5, and they said, "That's not going to work. Tell us you're taking it out, and we'll approve your plan." I sent the letter. Then, because I know how much those shade structures were wanted, I got with, uh, Mr. Foose and Mr. Troxel and looked at the new park's master plan, and let them tell me where the park service area is, and I am convinced that it is a low to moderate income service area. In a minute, I'll get to the change that drove all of those things. So, the shade structures will be back in, and I've made a commitment that we're going to do everything we can to have them in place before May of 2015. As I mentioned, scholarships were, were increased to 10,000. Housing rehab has continued. You recently amended the budget to allow for a code enforcement officer to be funded full-time in the target areas through the CDBG money. So, start figuring the time that a full-time code enforcement officer will spend, it will be in the target areas. Doesn't mean they can't send somebody else in to help. HUD would love it if we did that. We will dedicate that money to one code enforcement officer. We have hired, and starting Monday, will be a Grants Coordinator, and that Grants Coordinator is coming to us from Florida and has a great deal of experience in CDBG, and will, uh, manage the program for us. I'm ever so grateful, and I will be ever so happy to see that person arrive. Here's the big change, the new map of the target areas. We lost a little bit of Fodren Park, but we picked up Fon Meadow. Fon Meadow is now a target area. I never understood, but I understand it's census tracts that drives all this. The other loss from the target area is the eastern end of Hunter's Glen 1 and 2, and it would be nice if it were just a straight line, but it follows the center line of a road that cuts way in, so houses on one side of the street will be out of the target area, and on the south side of the street will be in the target area.
So, on that map, what's the difference between the blue and the gray color? Is the gray in, or is the gray out?
The gray is out.
And the blue is in?
And I can barely see it here. The blue is in.
Okay.
We picked up Quell Green West, or most of Quell Green West. The area below Independence is not included in the target area, but all of Quell Green West and Hunter's Green, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be in the target area. And the map is in census block, so it doesn't necessarily follow the city limits. The other significant change is you go to the canal in Meadow Creek, and you go west, north of Cartwright, all the way to 1092, that is now in the target area. We have a lot more target area to cover, and a lot more opportunity to use funds. I think you have a question?
No, I wanted to, uh, to, uh, tell you how good to hear that, um, the shade structure is, uh, is going to come into existence, and also the, uh, the code officer, I think that will make a major impact. And also, the, the code officer, I think that will make a major impact, not only for that CDBG area, but also for the city itself. The, and a new staff member, because as you and I both know, that HUD has a tendency to be favorable when, when everybody is on board as an employee, rather than outsourcing that kind of stuff.
HUD, HUD likes to have somebody they know they can talk to.
Yeah, yeah.
And somebody who's in a position to make the right decisions.
One of the things that I would like, Gary, if you would just take a hard look at, in light of the fact the city has a comprehensive park plan, and also they've incorporated paths, bike paths and walking paths, maybe we can just kind of coordinate with that from a CDBG standpoint and have access methods of mobility coming from those different areas, like walk paths and also bicycle paths, an alternative method of, of transportation. I'm a real interested in the way Fort Worth has made a big transition to the way they get around that city. And one of the things that they've done is used sources like CDBG funds to, to mobilize the community in alternative ways, such as bike paths and, and walking paths, so.
When we can show that the area-wide benefit from that program, and I believe we can show it, benefits a low to moderate income neighborhood and show the numbers of low to moderate income people that are benefited, we now have more neighborhoods to connect together that way and bring them back to points of interest, points of need, points of necessity, not just parks, but to bring them to shopping areas if, if they don't have the luxury of a vehicle. They have a convenient and safe way to get to a store to buy things and get to the drugstore to buy those necessities. I will work with Valerie and Scott and make sure we work, starting in November, put a package together, bring it to our committee, CDAC, who guides us very strongly on this. These aren't staff's preferences. These are CDAC's and council's preferences, and the members of council that serve on CDAC do a great job, give up a good deal of their time making sure we follow these programs correctly.
You're on that, right?
Yep.
Can you share that?
No.
Gary, I, I just have, just a comment.
You're still chairing.
You know, being on council for the last five years, I've seen this program with a lot of discussions around it. There's even at one point in time that, you know, there's even talk about having this go through county. To see this presentation, to commend you and your staff, also MKP Consulting, for coming up with, having these numbers and having, showing such a data, I think it's, it's a huge improvement to what y'all have done. So, thank you and, and staff for that. Only one question I have on this is, is, are we continuing to use the same consulting firm?
We have recently, I don't have an answer. I can give you some facts. We recently advertised for proposals, and we got two proposals, two responses. Based on budgeting and finances, we have fifteen thousand dollars we can use toward this as our estimate, after we hired the, the in-house person. One of the proposals indicated they could not do the job for less than forty-five thousand a year. The other proposal looked at the addendum and reshaped it to do it for fifteen thousand a year. My goal is to have as little reliance as possible on a consultant. I want it done in-house. We're responsible for it. We need to make sure we do it correctly. We need to be able to turn for help when we need to get that help and make sure we do it right. So, I don't really know the answer. I am, I am contemplating.
I was just asking. I also want to comment, you know, compliment Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Emery. And I know at one point in time, you two are over this committee and looking at this, and I forgot the third person.
Well, let me, let me introduce. Councilmember Smith is on the committee. Councilmember Ford is on the committee. And Councilmember Preston is on the committee.
They kicked me off.
Oh, they did, okay.
So, those, those are, those are my three strong supporters.
Good.
Good program. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Good, good, good stuff. You know, any time that we have people here that we need to recognize, candidates and such, I'll do so. Have David Out, David Hamilton, candidate for State Representative, District Twenty-Seven, David, also resident of Missouri City, so I know he's not here just to watch us, but anyway, wanted to introduce him. I didn't see any other candidates in the audience. If you are, raise your hand. I'll be happy to introduce you. Anyway, we'll move on to Item Six. Item Six is a consent agenda, is a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. There a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Mayor Protem Alacat made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item Seven, or Public Hearings and Related Actions, seven A one.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of approximately one hundred nineteen point eight seven acres of land from LC Three Retail District in part, I Industrial District in part, and R Five Town Home, Townhouse Residential District in part, to PD Plan Development District Number Ninety-four, describing said one hundred nineteen point eighty-seven acres of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, referencing a site plan providing for certain construction according to said plan, meaning the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the second and final reading. There are no changes from the first reading.
No changes since the first reading, right?
No changes.
Is there a motion?
Move to that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Jennifer, I have a question. Was any data ever provided to you in reference to any traffic counts or demographic data in reference to the site and the development?
No.
But it will be before any development takes place.
Yes.
Nothing happens without those studies, so, yeah. There are no discussion. We vote all those in favor. All opposed. Motion carries. There are no public hearings under seven B. Eight are appointees, or there are no appointees. Nine are authorizations. Nine A is considered recording the receipt of the 2014 tax values from Harris County appraisal district pursuant to a request by the Fort Bend County Tax Assessor Collector. So, you know, we, I think we got Fort Bend last time. This is Harris County. Harris County is always late in giving it. Remember, people, that part of Missouri City is in Harris County, Fondren Park, Fon Meadow. And so, we have about five thousand residents who actually live in Harris County, but City of Missouri City. So, what was that number, Wes? What was the number?
The number of what?
The dollars. Do we know?
One hundred eighty-nine million.
Hundred eighty-nine million is the valuation. What does that equate to in dollars to us? That's all I'm always interested in. Come on, figure it out there right quick. I know, yeah, I know that the Fort Bend piece equated almost a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to the City of Missouri City this time. And we bought a fire truck and public safety equipment with all of that. So, remember that when this tax hearing comes up on the eighteenth, that we lowered taxes a penny? We could have collected a million and a half. If we'd have left taxes, huh?
A million sixty-seven thousand.
All right. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Councilman Emery, second by Councilman Smith. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine B is consider authorizing a letter of intent with T.P. Houston Industrial Development, which is Trammell Crowe, for the Park Eight-Ninety Economic Development Project, which we just talked about in item seven A, or B, no, seven A one. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. As you're aware, we've been working with Trammell Crowe for the development of the business park, now titled Park Nine Eighty. Or, excuse me, Eight Ninety. I'm, I'm thinking dyslexic. Anyhow, as a part of that effort, the developer has been moving forward to be able to secure and move, close on the property. The item that you had on seven A, approved the zoning. We are moving forward to develop binding agreements. Into, in, to give the developer an understanding of our intent, we have developed a term sheet between the two parties. We created a memorandum, or, excuse me, a letter of intent that spells out the terms and conditions under which we would incorporate into a binding agreement. As we've discussed with council, the intent is for the developer to bear the responsibility of putting in the infrastructure, to move forward with the development consistent with the project plan that they've provided to us, that they would be beginning with a speculative building of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, that they have asked us, because the property has certain challenges with respect to infrastructure, with respect to the ability to move it forward, that they need to, financial challenges, that they need reimbursement for some of the infrastructure. From an economic development perspective, this allows us to not bear the burden of any risk, have a performance-based agreement. This letter of intent spells out that the developer would be eligible to receive reimbursement for certain public improvements made on the property under the terms and conditions that they first received investment that was determined by the CAD of certain values. And once they reached those thresholds, that they were absent any exemptions or abatements. And so, it would determine that the city would receive revenue in excess of the, any amount that we would be reimbursing them for. So, the city is not at risk in any reimbursement agreement. The benefit.
Repeat that one more time.
Say that again.
The development agreement that we propose, and, and what we're moving from an economic development standpoint, puts thresholds for performance. You eat what you kill, to, 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 to put it more simply. If they don't create the values on the ground, it does not create a vehicle by which they can be reimbursed. However, as they are successful in moving forward, and what we have seen them do successfully in Lakeview Business Park, with the values on the ground, be it real property improvements that come up, increases in value for personal property, those things that, that bring new investment to the city create a stream of revenue. Once they achieve those targets, they're eligible for reimbursement. So, the city is never at a financial risk of paying out for a reimbursement when there's not more than that reimbursement already on the ground.
And the reason we wanted you to repeat that, Joe, is there is a misunderstanding about, a lot of times, how these things work, and we're always giving everything away, and we get nothing, so.
Well, to, to the council's credit and the vision of, of this body in the past, when you move forward with more aggressive approach on Lakeview Business Park, at that time, Missouri City was not seen as a location for business development from a, an industrial. And with the investment that you chose to make, you seeded the ground that now allows us to take this approach. And even in that, that has been a success, because you recognize the market, and now we're able to be more strict with our approach and allows us to participate in, in a fashion where the, the city council is never at risk, or the city, city itself is never at financial risk. So, what this is, is it spells out the terms and conditions under which we would be moving forward with a binding agreement. It is not an action on a binding agreement. This does not bind either party to this agreement. We would be coming back to the city council with a formal agreement that spells out all those details, and we would be working with our legal counsel and their legal counsel to craft that agreement. We anticipate in a very aggressive schedule. Our goal is to have this development agreement back to you, which is already being drafted, within thirty days to act upon. In that, in that time, the developer would be closing on the property, so they're already at financial risk. They're already taking that private sector risk, and we'd be coming back with a formal agreement. So, we would encourage and support council's approval of the authorization to move forward with the letter of intent. Again, it's a non-binding document that basically spells out the nature of the relationship that we will execute more formally later. I'd be glad to answer any other questions you may have.
May I move that we authorize staff to move forward, expressing this intent and negotiating an agreement?
There a second?
A second.
Been a motion by Councilman White, and a second by Councilman Smith. Are there any other questions, discussion?
One thing I'd like to mention is that I was on council when we had the initial Trammell Crowe, and although it was uncharted territory, we were very grateful that this kind of a project came on board. And it turned out to be successful. I'm delighted to see that Trammell Crowe felt that there was opportunities again. And also to see that we, now that everyone knows what Missouri City is all about, we can be just a little bit more aggressive in our negotiations. So, I'd like to applaud you and staff for, for, for this type of, of agreement.
Thank you. And we are very fortunate to have you as a partner.
And applaud Trammell Crowe for even wanting to participate with it, so. Very good. Been a motion, and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Yes, sir. There are no ordinances. Item eleven, a resolution eleven A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, suspending the October one, 2014 effective date of CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC application to amend its rate schedules to afford the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, hiring like voice link attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of the cost of such litigation and appeals, authorizing intervention in any rate-making proceedings at the Public Utilities Commission that relates to CenterPoint's filing, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, and requiring notice of this resolution to CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC and legal counsel.
There a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
There a second?
This is, this is just what we do every year.
This is CenterPoint filed its application to amend its rate schedule. Not every year, but every time they file a application to amend. And because the city does have original jurisdiction, the city does have the authority under state law to suspend the rates for ninety days in order to study those, to determine whether any intervention is necessary and to direct that intervention. I might add that this is a reimbursable matter, so the city's cost will be reimbursed.
A second, and I'd like to ask some questions about this. I'd like to expand it beyond the rates, if I might. The Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, that's an advocacy. Is it just for the rates? What about consumer, customer service, things of that nature? Is that part of that?
It, it is predominantly rates. It is a coalition of cities in the area to assist with these type of utility matters. Because we have retained jurisdiction, we do have the original investigative responsibility in those type of things and have handled those in our offices when those are brought to our attention.
Is CenterPoint Energy here tonight as? Oh, man. I wanted to vent.
Well, you can vent.
Vent on Channel sixteen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there, will, during the course of, of the year, the fiscal year, does CenterPoint Energy come before council, other than when a rate change? Obviously not, but do they ever come to discuss consumer advocacy, customer service?
I think over the years, I've seen them come a couple of times. I think, you know, if that was desired, staff would certainly reach out to CenterPoint and request.
I think we need to occasionally just sit down and talk to them. Although they are the utilities company, I, I like to, I like to get close to them as close, you know, if I can.
But we have had them come discuss some of the things that you, that you're talking about.
Yeah, I want to see, I'd like for them to be current with it, if.
Well, I think that's true of any of those service companies, whether it be Comcast, CenterPoint, H L M P, any of those service companies that provide service to citizens. We need to be able to, you know, talk to any of those guys. I mean, they, our consumers pay a lot of money for that service, and I know they don't have a whole lot of choice. There's one gas provider and one electric provider. I mean, you can go through different companies to get your provider, but even Verizon, AT&amp;T, the two big telephone company providers in our city. We probably all have, from time to time, gotten complaints from citizens about cable service or telephone service or the lack thereof, so it'd be good to have those people come from time to time. service or the lack thereof, so it'd be good to have those people come from time to time.
Question, Caroline. Uh, I, I noticed in my bill from Comcast that they're gonna do a rate increase. Is there any, uh, vehicle similar to this that Comcast has to provide, uh, basis for there?
They're covered under, they're covered under the state franchise, so we don't have that same authority in regards to them.
Called AT&amp;T Universe or Direct E, or Direct, it's, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty tough.
And mayor and council, with, with growth that's taken place and all, we can have them address that as well as what they have done and what they potentially will be doing.
And give us an annual report, that'd be a good deal.
Okay.
It'd be great with, like Uverts, I think there are pockets within the city that do not have coverage.
There are.
Yet there are people that are within a block or two blocks that have that coverage.
And they, they continue to make expansion through the community, and maybe they could potentially provide some information to that.
It'd be nice to know what their priorities are, how do they establish those priorities, where they're gonna try to fill in those pockets that are missing.
Okay. We can do that?
Good idea. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Councilman Smith, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 11B.
A resolution of the city council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the publication of the notice of intention to issue City of Missouri City, Texas certificates of obligation in a principal amount not to exceed $5 million for the construction of water facilities and any real, uh, items related thereto, and for the payment of contractual obligations for professional services, authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement relating to such certificates and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Mayor and council, this item is for the, uh, the requirement that's needed to give notice for the issuance of certificates of obligations for the funding of a water facilities project, including a water line. Robert Upton is here, if you have specific questions about the project itself.
Where is it?
The water plant.
Underground.
Uh, underground, yeah.
You can always say that's underground, but, uh, mayor and council, it's actually the water transmission main for phase two for the Fort Bend Subsidies District to take us from, uh, our 26, 28% that we are at right now, we finished the year at 28%, but to meet the 30% mandates, so it'll take us from that and we'll be feeding up to Riverstone and to Mud 46 is our goal right now.
What mud has that, um, storage tank at, uh, at the end of Lake Olympia Boulevard in Beltway 8?
Palma.
That has just painted it with our city logo on it?
Oh, no, that's ours. Okay, the one of, no, no, at Fort Bend Toll Road in the end of Lake Olympia, we just built a new, uh, water storage tank there, we replaced an old one, that was, we came back to council.
Right, I knew there was an old one, that's, that's ours.
Yes, that is ours, that is the, oh, apologize, that is the Vicksburg, the old Vicksburg Joint Powers Plant, Mustang Plant now too, and, uh, we put our logo on that.
It looks nice.
I'm glad you like it.
If you've not seen it, it's, uh, driving down the other end, whoa, look at this, we got our logo, and not only that, we've got it on the, the big tower over here, behind Quail Valley Elementary School, that Quail Valley Utility District did.
Yes, sir.
And Wes, you might explain why we're doing COs instead of the other type of financing so that people understand what COs, CEOs-
The reason we're doing COs rather than, the typical are, one of the other mechanisms that you could use is a tax, a revenue bond, uh, which costs more money, we don't get as good of a rate, and we also have to set aside reserves, and that's, that's why we choose the certificate of obligation.
Very good.
This will be sold, uh, early on-
The open market, uh, yeah, and the rate will be determined then, huh?
On November, I believe.
Huh? And the rate will be determined in November when they're sold?
Yeah, I was talking to Joe today, looking at 3%, something like that.
Yeah, they'll be bought in two hours. Yeah, yeah, with our rating, they'll be bought, the minute they hit the market, they're gone, so. I used to buy them, so, very good. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Alakat made the motion, Councilman Wyatt made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Are there any announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, give, uh, a shout-out to, uh, all the, uh, folks that supported our, uh, Missouri City Police Officers Golf Tournament.
Yeah.
It, uh, was very successful. Uh, we had about a 10-minute, uh, delay because of rain, but, uh, through divine intervention, it moved all the way around us, so it allowed us to, uh, to finish. Uh, we had 34 teams, that's 136, uh, players. Uh, we had a very successful, um, silent auction, uh, and again, uh, we had, uh, a number of, uh, businesses and individuals that stepped up and helped us, uh, support the, uh, the golf tournament by sponsoring either lunches or beverage carts or, uh, dinners, so, uh, it was, uh, I think, very successful. We don't have the exact numbers right now, but, uh, it, uh, is going to bring in a number of dollars to the Police Officers Association so that they can continue with their scholarships and assisting, uh, police officers that may be in, uh, in financial distress, so, again, uh, thank everybody for, uh, for their participation and support, so.
Well, and thank you for your leadership and your committee for the work you all do on going out and collecting all those prizes and putting it together. It's a yeoman's task, I know for you and your committee every year, so congratulations to, to you and the group, so.
Any other?
Yeah, yesterday I, uh, attended the 145th-
I knew you had one, go to that.
-church anniversary for St. John's Baptist Church on Orfield Road. Uh, if you're going south on Orfield Road, it's a little white church, uh, on the right. Uh, that congregation is diligently working to try to preserve that property. Uh, I offered my help, I hope that as a council we could do, would do the same, very similar to wherever we help with the, uh, new house, and, uh, it's a piece of history. In Fort Bend County, they have a young person who's working on a PhD doing the, um, history for them. Uh, uh, I told him personally, I'm going to talk to some of our developers, 'cause I think as that area developed around them, we ought to be doing something to try to help preserve that. Uh, I also found out that they own the cemetery on Fifth Street.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that. And also found out there are a couple bodies that are buried off of Hackerson Road that support of that. A lot of people from, um, Arcola came on for that property that, that I learned, so, uh, it was a very good service, and, uh, we were singing so loud, we, well, I was hoping that, uh, Councilman Alakat was gonna hear us at his house, but he shut the door.
He was watching the bogey. He was watching the bogey. Yeah, you, you might mention the history of that church a little bit in that they were granted the, 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 the land, and they continue to keep the land as long as it remains a church.
A church, that's right, so it's really important.
Like I said, it's no longer a church, it reverts back to the previous property owners, and the back end of the church was burned-
Yep.
-some time ago, and they've really had some struggles trying to maintain it, but it, I'm glad the young man from U of H has taken that project on to-
He's the architect and-
To be the architect to restore it, it's a, it's, you know, it's an important part of history, just like the Freedom Tree is, the, the Missouri City, so I hope that you, hope we can get some interest from some of our-
And maybe the Joan Tink, uh, Foundation might, uh, take some recognition over there.
Absolutely, Jerry, I heard you the first time.
I'm clear before, right? Huh?
I just want to be real clear.
Yeah. Very good. Any other, any other reports? Very good. We have executives?
We do not.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
I wonder if, you know, it's too bad that it's heat that we can't get it in the CPG.
But my God, with the value around that.